He'll.
Josh will tell you where to go.
All right, we're very good.
He needs, he needs, he needs to know how to respond. He needs to appeal a notice. He's been given a notice of violation, so he needs to come in and.
Can I take a look at it?
No, just the casing.
It wasn't me. I didn't issue it.
And I went to the black.
I didn't like it.
Do you know how you can find this?
I wish it was orange again.
You know, this, it will break in one hour if I don't have that.
Oh, wow.
That's up for me. All right, very well. Everybody be quiet, please, so we can start. Oh, hi, Veronica. I want to welcome everyone for the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeal for tonight's meeting, Wednesday, April 10, 2024. It is 6:30 PM, and we are at the Room 320 Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Roadway, Hammers. I want to call this meeting to order. I make a roll call. My far left, Mr. Richard Sample. My far right, Mr. Troy Larson. Mrs. Veronica Devenese. Our clerk, Jim Akabachi. Myself, the chair, Nazir Al-Kalasi. Also present, town consultant, Mr. Phil Corredo from Allen Major. And assistant town planner, or future town planner, Mr. Josh also. And that's, I don't know who we have on Zoom. So we're gonna start, quick, on the preliminary business, we have the minutes 3:27. It was pushed, I guess, for this time, 3:27, 24 minutes. Did somebody read it?
They've been reviewed. There was a couple of minor corrections. The copy that we have is corrected. I move to accept as presented.
Any discussion on that?
I second.
A second by, motion by Jim, second by Rich. All in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
Jimmy.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. So this is done. We're gonna go to 1718 for Waterways, 3035 Cranberry Highway, to determine that the reconstruction of Route 28 is now substantially complete. If you all know, we have a package with you. Who was here when Attorney Dave Serkey came? I know Jimmy was with us. You were with us in Waterways?
I remember somebody came from Waterways to talk about.
No, that was about three years ago, three, four years ago.
Well, I've been here since.
Were you with us?
I don't think I.
Well.
Veronica may, Veronica may have been.
Anyway, they bought the Chinese restaurant, tore it down. They get in trouble with conservation. They had to file, they tear it down, start parking. There was a building on the lot. They tore it down, parking, no site plan, nothing. And it kind of turned like the wild west there. It's an accident waiting to happen. Too many exits to the highway. Last year, they had an incident with a bus full of kids. And when Mr. Serkey came in before the highway got constructed, he promised, at Counselor Serkey, Rich Serkey, yes, he had promised that as soon as the highway substantially finished, kind of like now. It's all what's missing now, the final code, and put the switch on for the lights. He will come back with us with a major site plan, so we decide what we're gonna do. Because, as you all know, it's just big parking lot. And everybody leave the same time, everybody come in the same time. At the end of the day, this gets tired. Usually, one mother or one father with 10 kids, because he brought the nephews and the nieces. Everybody's tired, cars running to get out of there to beat the traffic. It's dangerous. I think it's very dangerous. Now, we went back to the hearing. I discussed with Attorney Bowen and Administrator and Mr. Josh and Mr. Kim Buckland. And we went back and read the minutes and everything, and we prepared something. This is before you. I'd like to get a motion and accept it, to make him come to the table or something. Because we had a meeting about a year ago at Room 27, at the town hall over there. And somehow, they agreed to come with a site plan. Then they re-nagged on the deal. So if you guys like to take a look at these documents that Josh prepared.
Now, if I understand, as additional information to your comments, if I understand correctly, since this meeting where we gave them a time-limited approval.
That three years ago or four, or this one right now, about a year ago?
This, what we're talking about here, on the site plan review issue, since then, I believe ownership has changed.
Right. Ownership, whenever that hearing was, was Attorney Serkey. That was different owner. The owner sold this property to a new gentleman. Apparently, she didn't disclose that there was issues. This is not our problem. And we hadn't told them that on a meeting here at the town hall, I forget, about last year. Was it last year, Josh?
Yeah, maybe a little less, but yeah, within the year.
Within the year. And we said, we expressed our, we said, we're sorry that you brought a problem, but the sound, you have to go back to the seller, why they didn't disclose it to you. And that's, that doesn't mean we can jeopardize public safety, because you bought something with a problem. And they said, yes, they had their attorney, they agreed to come to do a site plan. They agreed in a meeting to do a site plan. Few months later, they send letters saying they want, they'll sue the town, this and that. I said, okay, well, sue the town, I guess you sue the town. It is what it is. So I think it's very important, this document we sent to them, that gives them three months to start the site plan, the plans, and implement it by next year, before next season. If they don't in three months, that place will be shut down. So whoever's hearing, in three months, if they don't start their site plan and substantially completed, the place will be, will have a cease and desist, and it will be shut down. Hopefully, they're listening.
My question is, this letter dated March 27.
Yep.
Has it been mailed? Or are we considering accepting it in the form written and signing it to be mailed? To be mailed.
It's gonna be mailed.
To be mailed.
Certified, or no, it's gonna be sent with the sheriff, right?
Yeah, so you guys are gonna vote to accept it tonight. You'll sign it tonight. And tomorrow, I will send a certified mail, I'll send a regular mail, and we're gonna use a constable to.
A constable, yeah.
I make, I move that we table this until the end, so that all the members have had a chance to read this, and then we can decide if there's any wording that we want changed.
Do you have a second on that? To table it to the end, do you have a second?
Yes, second.
Second, Veronica, all in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. So this goes to the end. We move to continued public hearing 49, 49-23 McKenna and Del Meyer for the appeal for 504 Main Street. Who's got the extension on that?
Okay, so we got a letter requesting for an extension until April 24, and an agreement that they will extend the deadline for the board to make a decision until May 30. And I move to grant the request as stated.
Any discussion on that? Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Second, by Rich, all in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Myself, Nazir, aye, carries. Second one, 5-24 Walid Al-Daya, the special permit to 2544 and 2546 Cranberry Highway.
And we also have a letter on that one requesting an extension until May 8. And again, they're extending the decision for the board to make a decision to May 30.
Any discussion on that matter? Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Myself, Nazir, aye, carries. On 624 TTR LLC Trito Road, a gentleman, she expressed to him, Sonia, he hasn't finished his plan. And she expressed to him, there's no need for him to come all the way. I guess he lives in Eastern or somewhere. So, and I know it's gonna take him a month to finish the plan. So I was, I recommend that we continue him to 522.
22 or 24?
May 22nd.
Okay.
No, he needs at least a month of the plans.
Okay.
To May 22nd.
Okay, May 22, okay.
And hopefully, by then, Phil had reviewed the plans too and everything.
And then what about the decision for the board? That's going out to May 30, or is it already out beyond then?
Yeah, she got an extension from him.
Can we, I think the extension needs to be later than a couple of days after the hearing.
Okay.
Is it now?
Well, is it, right, did you say the 30th? I'm looking at it, 624, it doesn't even have a date on here for when it's due. But I think, if we're gonna give him till the 22nd of May, it should be at least extended till, you know, June 8, or, you know, after the following meeting.
All right.
I think that the, I think that.
Yeah, there's no deadline here.
It's April 10.
That's.
That's a meeting?
That's today, so.
Okay, okay.
They were supposed to be here, but they're not.
Okay, so let's put it out to a decision by June 30.
Well.
Yeah.
This creates a little bit of an issue, I think. If today is the day, and there has been no signed extension.
She, he gave Sonia signed extension on an email. But Sonia, please email the gentleman back and get an extension to what you guys said.
For the decision, June 30.
June 30, for June 30, 2024, from the gentleman, for Trito Road. All right, that being said, some wishes.
Motion to continue to May 22, and to continue the decision by the board till the end of June, June 30.
Okay, do I have a second on Jim's motion?
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
And myself, Nazir. Did I say Jim? Jim?
Aye.
Okay. So 500, it's continued. Okay, we're gonna move to public hearing 1124 Bank of America, 2991 Cranberry Highway.
The zoning board of appeal to hold a public hearing on April 10, 2024, at 6:30 PM in Room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Roadway, Hammers, 02571, to consider petition number 11-24 for variance from the requirements of Article 11, Section 1128 and Section 1172 under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Bank of America Care of Pro Sign Service LLC of 110 Forge River Parkway, Rainham, Mass, seeking to replace the existing sign-banned cabinets with a new logo on the front, rear, and side elevations of ATM building located at 2991 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. That appears on Assessors Map 15, Lot C, in the CS zoning district.
Name another sir.
Good evening, my name's Jesse. I'm with Pro Sign Service at 110 Forge River Parkway in Rainham, Mass.
Okay, wanna give us a quick brief, what you doing?
Yes, as Jim mentioned, we are seeking to update Bank of America's existing signage for the standalone ATM building located in the Stop &amp; Shop parking lot. Replacing each sign with a like-for-like in general size. The logos of the actual letters are decreasing. And the only parts of these updated branding will be, that will illuminate, will be the letters themselves and not the entire face, like the existing signage. This is part of a giant rebranding project that Bank of America is going through right now.
Okay, so basically, same size, same location, just the colors, the font.
Just the colors, yeah, just updating.
Okay, as you guys all know, our bylaws, basically, if you wanna paint a sign, you need to reapply, and that's how it is. So apparently, they're gonna need a variance to reinstall it. That's how it is. I believe it wants a variance. It is a hardship, that substantial, substantial changes of the sign will be substantial detriment on the finances to change the whole thing. And that being there for a while, I don't think it's a problem, but however the board feels about it. Troy, what do you think?
I don't think it's a problem.
Veronica.
Just a question, I don't think it's a problem, but wouldn't this be a special permit?
No.
It's already existing.
No, because it's so big. If you have to do it from scratch, it needs a variance, it's too big.
Oh, okay, I don't have a problem with it.
Jimmy.
I'm all set, I'm no problem.
It's too big for the building, because the ratio is too.
The ratio of sign to building.
Rich, what do you think, bud?
I'm all set.
Anyone in public in favor, against this project? I hear none.
Make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
I have a motion to close. Any discussion on that? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
Jimmy.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
And myself, I close this. Okay, wishes.
Motion to approve as proposed and shown in a plan. I think the plan has a name on it, planned by, what's the name of the company? Stratus Sun Unlimited dot com, or?
Just Stratus.
It's just Stratus?
Yeah.
It's just part of your name, or is it?
You can put anything you want.
Stratus, as presented by Stratus Sign.
Okay, very well. Terry, please add on the decision that does meet statute requirement of MGL 40A, Section 10. And on the variance, we're granting relief on 1128 and 1172, Part 1 and Part 2. So we have a motion by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
Jimmy.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
And myself, aye, carries. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, thank you for coming in.
Let's go back to Waterways.
I think it was signed better, too.
Yeah.
You guys got, Veronica handed the motor early. Yeah, thank you.
Anyway, before, Mr. from Terry Lane. So you have to go to your office, they'll explain to you the process, how to come before. All right, very well. Before we go forward, on, Phil, you wanna come forward, please, and just state your name and address for the racket?
Phil Cuadaro, Allen and Major Associates.
All right. I asked Mr. Phil to come here, and I'm glad he did. What, did I ask you? Oh, he came anyway. I think I did, right?
I was here anyways.
For the Decorah Partners, the Woodlands Cove, is it? And with the mess with the drainage.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I've been going by there every day. I've text you a few times. What do you think of the whole thing?
So I was on-site last week. I saw the puddles that you had observed a couple of days prior. I met with Mark Pilati. He had indicated that they had temporary sedimentation, siltation controls in the drain, and that's why the larger puddle was still there. I didn't dig it up. It sounded completely plausible. He should do that until that area stabilizes.
I understand.
But the point that I raised with him, that I think you ultimately echoed, is let's give this a day or two. It should ultimately drain through that soil, and it's, it's still there. So he has something else going on there that needs to be resolved. I'm back meeting him Friday morning as our routine follow-up.
Let me ask you, did they send you drawing of what they're doing for the drainage chambers?
They did, yes, yes.
And you think those buckets with stones work with the four-inch?
They, they do. They proof out by calculation, and they should work based on the small areas that it's picking up, yes.
But in the back, the last building, that's not a small area. That whole project thumps there.
So the bigger, the bigger infiltration system, that's adequately sized as well. But I didn't take a deep dive on that, because that predates me and was previously approved.
The biggest drainage system picks up up high.
It does.
It doesn't pick up, that building goes back there.
No, no, that's picked up by the new mini flow drywall systems that they are installing as part of this drainage remediation now. This was unaccounted for.
I don't, did you do the calculation for that?
For the, for the new stuff, we checked their calculations, yes. And what Dominic Rinaldi had provided was correct, it checked out by math. What was, what I was suspect on is the, the rates that they're using for the soils out there, I didn't necessarily agree with, as I was looking at them.
It is good rates there, I know the soil very well there.
Right, but they're using a very, very high rate. But the fact that there were puddles out there seems to disconnect with the rates that they're using.
The puddles are because all the silt running, because they never treat it. But the soil there, I've done a project right next to it, it's fine. But I don't like how the grade drops to that last building. I really wanted to see a retaining wall, but I guess they don't wanna do it, I don't know. But in our decision that we drafted, we, I don't believe the board's gonna say, okay. By the way, it's not a public hearing, so we could discuss it. I don't believe, unless the board says, okay, and you say, okay, on the project, we're not willing to issue, well, we will inform the commissioner that we're not happy with it. We can't make him issue or not issue an occupancy, but that's our decision that's going. So we need to visit and revisit. It's a tough site, I don't know what hap, I know what happened. Nobody was holding a laser, that's what happened. Nobody was building it right, nobody was watching. So we required an ASBelt also. So we wanna see an ASBelt. And apparently, comparing it to the proposed, it's way off. But I really don't, don't want it Mickey-mousted. They really Mickey-mousted it, to be honest with you. That's how I see it. I don't know if any of the board want to look at it. That's a Mickey-mouset job, not a $50 million job.
I reminded Mark on Friday that he has conditions precedent to getting his CO that he needs to adhere to, which is, which is providing the ASBelt and making sure it's reviewed before he thinks he's going to walk out with a permit. He indicated he's on top of it. And to be fair, you know, I gave him a little bit of flexibility. He is in the middle of construction. He has a number of erosion problems, siltation problems out there that he's chasing his tail on, that have to be resolved. And I wouldn't agree with the drainage being done until those are addressed also.
Yeah, I mean, that's at least a $50 million project. I mean, maybe the people who's doing it are capable, but I think these are landscaping crew. They're not excavation crew. And I noticed they're landscapers.
You are correct. It's landscapers doing.
They're not site contractors. And landscaper, I mean, they're probably good, I probably give them that, but they're not set up to do drainage. And, because I saw them do all this, I didn't see them holding a laser. I go there every single day, never seen them once put on laser. Today, I have to say, I saw them put on laser, because between the first two buildings, they put on that wall. That's the first day I seen them with a laser. But before that, when you was on laser. So, and I did express this to our previous meeting there, that you wanna go ahead and start, they wanted to rush on work. I said, at your own risk, if we're not happy with it, we don't have to agree to it. So that's something we have to stay on top of. I like the board to visit sometimes when they have a chance to drive by. Do you wanna put any input, Rich, on that?
I drove through there yesterday, went through and saw what they were doing.
I'll have another report for the board by the end of the week.
What did I do with the last two buildings? How the road is higher than the entrance?
So they anticipate doing the same modification to cut that grade down and use retaining walls and sloping and landscaping to mask the elevation change? That's the goal.
The right way to do it, take the road out and drop it, that's the right way.
Yes.
If it was my project, that's what I would do.
I think we have to go back quite a ways to find out why it went sideways, like, I think to your point.
I know.
Nobody was checking it, and people weren't connecting the.
Set five foundation, they just put foundation from the existing elevation. They didn't read the plan. They're like six feet off, six feet off, deep.
Six feet.
At least, I think they're six, seven feet off.
It, it's a sizable mistake that they're chasing now, yes.
So if they had spent a lot of money on Phil when they did it the first time, dirt, Phil.
No, they don't need Phil, they need a good contractor.
On quality control, quality control.
Talking about this Phil?
No. That would have been great. Better, if they had spent the money on quality work, quality control, we wouldn't be in this mess.
But if the thing was five feet more out of the ground, wouldn't they have to raise the ground to?
No, no, because they raised it somewhere else. It would have balanced itself.
Okay, okay.
Plus, not much Phil. The size, the amount of Phil for 50 million is nothing. This, I'm assuming 50, 150 units are 350 a unit with the land there. That's almost $45 million. And, you know, God love them, I hope they make billions, and they get sizable amount of grant and sizable rebates, and they should have hired the right people. I don't understand why the town should sucker up. It came out ugly, sorry, it came out ugly. If they did it right, it would have been beautiful. It just, it's done, it's weird.
Well, we've been, we've been butting heads with them right along, so.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they took their choice, their course, so.
So.
So I think it's important to send a message via this applicant, or any applicant, that when an applicant comes in front of the town and thumbs their nose and says, ha, ha, it's a 40B project, and we can overrule your zoning, we go, yeah, you're right, and we do what we can to work with them. But then, when they go and don't even build the plan, I think it's time for us to thumb our nose back at them. That's the way I feel.
I do too.
You can reject the ASBelt at the end of the day.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't mean, I'm usually very lenient and very forgiving, but when I hear about a piece of silt cloth not allowing water to go into a drain, and I know, you know, in my non-contractors mind, that if I went there and put my hand on top of that cloth and cleared some of that sand, the water could go through that cloth, well, you know, the words escape me. Well, I have the words, but I just, you know, people get mad when I use them.
Anyway, it, the board, the board has all the right to reject the project the way it is. Moving these buildings, jacking them up, it's very unfair, I guess, it's very costly. But to go Mickey-mouset with landscaper.
Mickey-mouset, Mickey-mouset's giving them a lot of credit.
So I'm not, I personally, not gonna be happy with it. I don't think they'll get my vote for it, but I don't know with the rest of the board, they have to decide themselves.
They, they have more work to do before they.
It needs a real, they need, I've told them in the meeting there, I tell them, pay attention, you need a real architect. It needs a very, very creative architect to let, to design the whole landscape and retaining wall, to make it look, that's how it's designed to do. Send a landscaper to do it, it's not gonna cut it. I mean, that's what it is. They're gonna have, they're gonna have to spend some money to get somebody real good to design it. Other than that, I don't know what to tell them. Hopefully, they're listening.
Hopefully, they will, yeah. I mean, I think the message is that, that in the end, it should turn out to be a project that is favorable to the town despite the burden on the school and the fire and the police departments. I don't think it's gonna really be a detriment to the town, but I don't think the town should allow it to be detrimental.
And the money was spent, they're just, nobody's watching. That tells me no one cares, because they were getting money left and right, so they don't care. So, but that's their problem, they don't have to care, we do. So that's, that's it. So please relay the message, if you talk to them, or.
I will see them on Friday.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
All right, let's go to Water, thanks for coming in.
So what time is your site visit on Friday?
Nine o'clock.
Maybe I'll go by also, I'm there all the, I go twice a day sometimes. All right, let's go back. All right, let's go back.
You'll be there at nine o'clock this Friday?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, so if you guys want to go.
All right, I can go.
Yeah, I guess you could discuss it. It's closed. All right, let's go back to WaterWiz.
I've had a chance to read it. My first, my, I don't find issue with the letter or the content of the letter. After I read it three times, I understood it. Not that I didn't get it on the first read, but I just, you get what I'm saying, you know, to really. But I think my only comment would be that in the, in the, next to the last paragraph or the paragraph preceding the exhibits, it says that zoning, you know, within the timeframe specified by the covenant, which leaves room for argument. I think I'd like to somehow put in there, but no later than June 27, 2024. Give them a specific date.
No, this letter, it triggers the three months notice.
I understand. So this is dated March 27, and it said that they will do it within three months. And we're telling them that it's substantially complete. So three months from March 27 is June 27. They should have that into us no later than June 27.
No later.
Based on the date on this letter. Now, we can change June 27 to July 4, Yankee, if you want to be Yankee doodle about it. I don't care.
That makes sense, Josh?
Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, I understand what you're trying to say.
I want to give them, I don't want to give a lawyer words that say within the terms of the covenant. Because, you know, lawyers can take words and make them say anything they need them to say. But if you say, but no later than, and give them a specific date, it's hard to argue with a specific date. That's just my thought.
It's definitely a good thought. So, you know, we've had discussion in the town council about this letter, and we feel that they're probably gonna argue against it anyway.
Exactly.
It wouldn't hurt to put it in the letter.
Jimmy, this the one we're gonna sign. Can you write it properly here?
This is, that's the one, yeah.
Can you write what you wanted to write on that?
Okay. Are you okay with the date that I suggested?
I'm okay. You guys okay with the date?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. I'm okay.
We will vote on it at the end, but write it down right there initially. We're all gonna initial it.
And I.
Troy, what do you think? Are you good sending that letter with the modification Jim did?
I am.
Veronica?
I'm still trying to understand what's happening. I mean, I see, there's a lot, there are a lot of documents here that I'm trying to just ingest quickly.
If you want, I can give you a brief summary of, you know, what the goal of the letter is and what the exhibits are.
So the letter would be this, that's not dated, that I can see?
What's not dated?
Where's the date?
In the address.
Yeah, let, why don't Josh give us a brief, so, and then you guys can ask questions.
But this is 2022, so there's no correspondence that's been recent? This is what we intend to send soon?
We're sending it tomorrow if you guys sign off on it.
Yeah, it's dated March 20.
Should say March 2024.
Oh, sorry.
There's a typo on the.
Oh, okay.
We'll fix that too.
I can make that edit, yeah. Just, just so I'm sure that that 22 references this date. Or, okay, there, when the covenant was signed, I just wanted to make sure. Maybe that's where the confusion was, but, yeah, we can edit that date. That's not a problem. So I guess a brief, a brief description of what we're trying to accomplish with this, and I can go into more detail after that. But, you know, it's identified by the town that the property is unsafe the way that they're operating, the parking and other issues that they have now. And that the covenant they signed basically said, with the completion of the highway, you'll come back to the town with a site plan. We believe that they're gonna argue that the highway isn't complete because it still.
Because they didn't fill the white sign yet, yeah.
Right, they still need a top coat for the asphalt. So we believe they're gonna come back and say, well, the highway isn't complete, so technically, we don't have to come back. That's why we have obtained letters from the police chief, fire and EMS saying, we believe it's substantially complete. And here are a bunch of organizations saying that it's a safety hazard, basically to persuade them to say, if this did go to court, we have the justification to say that it's close enough. The entrances and exits aren't gonna change.
So, so I, both, you can go first, Jim. So I'll go first, I guess.
Go ahead, Rich.
So Josh, there's some concern. I know that they put this separation in the, in that area of Route 6 or 28, whatever, whichever way you want to call it.
The turnaround in the median?
Just they, they put the concrete barriers through there.
Okay, yep.
But then they modified it in front of WaterWiz. They had an area where people were shooting across. Well, there's still an open driveway from WaterWiz that's directly across from the mobile home turnaround.
Right.
That can't be there. I've already seen somebody shoot across there.
It's unlikely that we're gonna get MassDOT to go out and change that. So what we're gonna do is require that they're. Well, we're gonna require that they have an entrance and an exit, and their exit doesn't correspond with that cut through. So no one can exit to cut through.
So they, and so basically, they need to clutter off on their property then?
Or create the entrance and exit in a way that they can't.
I just feel if you don't cut it off, it's still gonna be used on a busy day.
Yeah, and I, that's something that you guys can address in your, in your review of the project.
All right.
But I also agree, and I believe the police chief's letter and maybe the fire department's letter address that same cutout.
The curb cuts are now existing, is that correct?
Yeah.
So is the curb cut directly across from that cut through?
It's pretty damn clear.
There is a curb cut that allows them to get that cut through.
They're not gonna be able to change the curb cut?
Right, let me explain something. That was my biggest concern in the first hearing, if you guys read the minutes.
I remember.
And Jimmy, remember, the big dilemma about it, I didn't want the opening from day one. And the reason the state put this opening, because that belongs to the old Chinese restaurant. So that's a separate lot. You understand? See, that's why the curb cut is there. That's a separate lot. The issue, when they came to us, they wanted to do a parking lot where the Chinese restaurant is. Town of Wareham do not allow you, the bylaw does not allow you to just build a parking lot without a main building, a house, a business, a structure. And that's how it started, all this. Then they increased the, the capacity of the park, and they don't have enough parking. So, so all these things came together. And back then, we sent them a notice to come before us, and it was my first thing about shan that curb down. But the state had designed it prior because it's a Chinese restaurant. It used to be the Chinese restaurant. And of course, they didn't go out, say, close it. They want to open.
There's an additional problem there too. I remember if, and after I say this, you'll remember too. Cape Cod Gas, the gas station owns a big triangle right away there.
Have a right away, yeah.
So the only place they could put a curb cut for the would-be Hong Kong Island locates lot was where it is. That's the.
Right, because that, Cape Cod Gas have an easement from the Chinese restaurant, which could be used for the Chinese restaurant and Cape Cod Gas. But it's about a pie shape, 150 feet long, but not the second exit, not the second curb the state built.
They couldn't, yeah. They couldn't get there because of the right, because of the easement, they couldn't move it down for a lot.
Right.
So maybe, okay, now I'm starting to understand this.
That's why we need a site plan.
Right, in your review of the site plan, you can determine where the entrance and exit is, and you will determine that the exit shouldn't be across from that curb cut through the median.
We could make, we could make them use the exit that's south of that turnaround. And, and the entrance could be north of that turnaround. So when people come from the north heading south.
I would say the entrance and exit, the same spot that's always been where the sign is WaterWiz. Entrance, exit, this way it's controllable. I've seen cars at 330 flying from the parking lot diagonally when the, when the park almost closing at 50 miles an hour in that parking lot, running because they want to get out before the traffic.
Yeah, but they can't do that. There's a curb in the way now, and.
No, they, no, they can't go towards Cape Cod Gas, this area. See, there's too many curbs open.
Again, Cape Cod Gas is south of the turnaround, so it's.
And there's one before it, and there's the one they, they own originally. There's like three, four entrances to the place.
Yeah, because people can, because they don't, maybe the site plan, what we need to do is make them put barrels up to sort of stop.
No, they need, they need grass strips, they need curbing, they need safety sidewalks, they need lighting.
That's got nothing, that really has little to do with this letter.
Right.
But it's good, it's good conversation, it's good so that everybody gets up to speed on this thing.
Right, so I think we understand that they may fight the letter, and that's why we've gotten the letters from the public safety officials as a way to mitigate that. I would also say that the applicant is currently in front of the Conservation Commission. They, they are proposing to fill the isolated wetland that's on the left side of their parking lot, if you're looking at WaterWiz, and replicate that somewhere else so they can have a bigger parking lot, which is ultimately what they need. Especially if they're gonna accommodate parking islands.
Is it like 5,000 square feet or less?
So there is a way to fill and replicate over 5,000 feet. Just takes a lot more permitting. But, yeah, so I think they are coming.
Square foot to square foot.
They are coming in under 5,000 square feet. They wanted a one-to-one replication area. We told them that we want something closer to a two-to-one replication area, and they're coming back at our next meeting. So I think it is possible for them to have some type of application in front of you guys before, you know, this third, three months is up.
Well, I really hope Conservation, I mean, we want to help them out, but we don't want the Wild West. I mean, I hope Conservation give them this permit so they have more parking, so they have room to play with.
I can't speak for the commission, but I think if they do come closer to a two-to-one ratio, I think it's, it's a good project.
Okay.
I mean, they encompass more than just their own lots.
No, but we gotta make sure Sonia, give it to Josh by hand.
The side of Ocean State Job Lot, and it creeps out when that's busy. It's starting to creep out into Caddies.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're there.
I mean, so even if it's 5,000 square feet, what's that, maybe, maybe 50 cars at the most?
5,000, eight, nine cars.
I, I think that potentially with this work, they could double the size of their parking lot. And that's just a rough, you're looking at the site plan and estimating.
When you look at the parking lot that used to be Hong Kong Island.
Well, yeah, I'm familiar with it.
All right, and you go behind it, it drops down, there's a five or six or seven-foot drop in grade down to a lower area, and it's within there, is, am I wrong? That's where the wetland, down in there. There's a puddle because, you know, you dig a hole and water goes in the hole.
5,000 square feet lot, it's about 10, 15 cars. But the way it is where it's centered, then you have 50-foot buffer.
Right.
Then you're up to 60 cars.
So it's a big area.
So if you move it far, not, you're only not, you're not only gonna win five, make 5,000 square feet, you probably make an acre because the 50-foot buffer around it.
Yeah, we have a 50-foot no-activity zone for commercial properties. So really, you're gaining whatever they're filling plus, you know, 50 feet off of whatever that line is.
All the way around.
Right.
Plus the, just the inaccessible land, just because of the change in the grade and all that jazz that, you know, that they can't fill, you know. So they're gonna gain a lot of parking out of it.
Hopefully, they get it. I hope, I hope they get it so we could work together.
And they're, and I think they rent the, the old Walmart parking lot.
I think they're, they're talking to everyone they can to get parking.
You know, the.
Well, like I said, they already, they already occupy most of the left side of Caddies. And now they're already over there. And then I've seen, again, I mean, I spoke earlier, but I've even seen them in the Ocean State parking lot where people are getting out with their basic, their bathing suits and their towels, and they're walking all the way.
That whole, that whole section from Ocean State.
They fill that whole thing up. I don't see what they do there is gonna help that.
They rent that whole thing. They fill it right up. They have tenants out there, and, and they need it.
But using the Caddies and trouble, they have to go to planning board because that's their permit. And you might, they have to revise the parking lot for that place because that's designed for Caddies and that. But maybe for Walmart, it needed more parking than Caddies, so maybe they have the room.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, it's something to look into.
They have to do some engineering. All right, that being said, so let's, if you make a motion. Jimmy, can you motion that letter date with the revisions you did so we could vote on it?
Yeah, I moved to, to approve as edited the no longer draft, the signed copy of this letter to be mailed to 3031 Cranberry Highway LLC as in the form that it's in now. Moved to accept.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion to accept that letter with the revisions of the dates that Jimmy wrote, and we all initial the letter to send to WaterWiz our concerns and what we expect them to do. And we give the power for the plant, for the, the planning department to send them via Constable Certified Mail and regular mail. All right, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second, by Rich, any discussion before we go forward? Here, none, so all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazzy, aye. So that's sent, that's good. Did you guys any discussion before we close?
Just noticing that Troy Lawson's expiration date is getting close. Why are we at the June 30th when he just became a full member? I'm just wondering if we have it.
That's, it must have been the, the time he got.
Okay, I think I still see it when I go on the.
You know why? Because he took Jake's seat, and Jake's seat's expiring June 30. So when he goes this time, he'll get a five-year.
Okay.
So you gotta apply it to selectmen.
So you're talking about closing the whole meeting? I thought we were just talking about closing that. Were we talking about closing the meeting?
Yeah, unless you guys want to discuss something.
Oh, yeah, I did want to, I wanted to talk about actually members of the board because we have no associate members right now.
We keep asking people. Ask friends, ask anybody.
I've gone around and asked and tried and got people to come, and nobody wants to step up. And that's a problem because.
Chris Conti went before, he sent, I don't know, he contacted Select Board, I guess.
So apply again.
Yeah, he did apply.
He gotta come before us to recommend.
I think that we did, we did, and it went in front of the selectmen, and they elected not to accept him, I believe.
Try again.
It's just, it's just tough.
We have new boards. There's two, three new selectmen since then.
So it's just a little tough because when, soon as one of us has to recuse herself, these people don't get their full amount of votes.
Right, and if somebody's absent.
And it's not really their fault.
No.
No, and then it's, it's not, it's not fair for somebody to have to sign in at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning because of difference in time zone. You know, I'm, you know.
Well.
Why doesn't, somebody reach out to Chris? Have him apply again. There's three different selectmen. That's all what he needs, three.
I will tell him that because I, I'm, I'm looking at this, and just reading this letter is what's really making me think about it because this whole thing with WaterWiz would not even be an issue if it wasn't constructively granted. It was probably constructively granted.
Yeah, but it was, it was resent, resented.
What, right.
They agreed to resent it.
Well, that's true, that's true, but it's the constructive grant that I'm noticing. And I'm like, that's right before I joined when you were like, we need members because applicants are gonna, you know, applications are gonna be granted.
Right.
So we're, we could be in that position again.
All we need is one of us five to get.
Okay, while we're here, why don't we, if somebody, if somebody wished to recommend Troy, make a motion so we get our way, they're gonna need.
Is Troy being reappointed?
Yeah, they're gonna need a recommendation.
I think we should send that.
Have Sonia write the letter and whatever states are recommended.
I may make, so moved.
All right, we have a recommendation by Jim to reinstate Mr. Troy Lawson to a regular member for another five-year term. By Jim, do I have a second?
He's, I so second.
Second by Mr. Sample, all in favor, say aye. Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, please, Sonia, get that letter of selectmen before his term expires. So this time, he'll get five years.
Sonia, Sonia doesn't necessarily listen to the.
Or Patty. Patty, do it, give it to Sonia.
Maybe Patty could write a note or something to Sonia or.
I took a note.
You took a note? You, you and Sonia speak?
We're close enough.
You're close, and you can yell from one room to the other?
Yeah, I'll lock on the wall.
Terms are five years now because.
They always been five years.
I joined in 2019. Why did I have to?
You must took someone else's seat.
You came in as associate.
No, I didn't.
You took someone else's seat.
Right, the seats are staggered so the whole board can't flip over in the same year.
I remember there was a, a whole to-do and a waiting term there for a while. We were trying to get that decided, and they, that's exactly what they said. They wanted to stagger them.
Just like they staggered the board before me and Nazzy. One died every week until they were all gone.
Three in a month.[1795.34]
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's crazy.
All right, I hate to leave you guys, but I gotta run.
Yep.
Move to adjourn.
A motion by Jim, do I have a second by Veronica? All in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Myself, Nazee, aye. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.